This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call the village board meeting to order for Tuesday, November 22. Roll call, please.
President Kardasky.
Here.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Kubaki is excused. Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Creaker.
Here.
Trustee Flukie.
Here.
And trustee service.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of the citizens of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember our men and women throughout the world in uniform. I have no changes to the agenda. I need a motion to approve, please.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to present the agenda, to accept the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Action on the opening closed minutes from October 25, 2022.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number six, comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Must state name and address. Limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named, and the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Is there anybody here who would like to talk about something not on the agenda? Seeing nobody raising their hand and coming forward, we'll move on. Number seven, written communications and/or announcements. Does anybody have anything? I do. First of all, I got an email from the Green Bay Rockers today that stated that, you know, they are a great community partner, and I think sometimes people forget how great of a partner they are. Last year, they gave over $98,000 to local nonprofits. So I think that's a really great community asset. So I just wanted to say that. Second of all, a couple of us were at the league meeting in La Crosse a couple of weeks ago, and our new league president is Maureen Murphy. She is the administrator in Mount Pleasant, and she has appointed me to the Board of Directors for the League of Municipalities. So we're going to try to tackle the shared revenue problem and what to do with the $6.6 billion in excess money. So hopefully, we'll get some money to spend. So I just wanted to say that it is a three-year appointment, so I will be on the board. So if anybody from any other municipalities has issues, items they want me to bring forward, anybody here would like me to bring anything, just let me know. Okay. Number eight, action on the consent agenda. Action on change of agent, Indian Head Oil Company LLC, DBA Circle K, number 2746518, Shannon Matson Hitten. B, general fund financial report, October year-to-date. C, budgeted expenditures. And D, department report. Anybody want to make a motion to approve, or do you want anything pulled?
A move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Number nine, this is a public hearing for the 2023 Village of Ashwabnan proposed budget. Is there anybody here who would like to speak for or against the proposed budget? It's a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak for or against the proposed budget? Is there anybody online that would like to speak for or against this budget? Anybody want to speak for or against the budget? Okay, I would say I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Ten, action items. Ten A, action on resolution R-11-2-22, Village of Ashwabnan 2023 budget. Any questions? Greg is here. Joel is here. It was a, started out as not such a great-looking budget, but thanks to all the department heads and everybody else around here, and I think we came to a great budget.
I think after spending two and a half, three hours going through the budget, I believe there's, staff did a great job as usual. I commend Greg and his people for doing it, and I would like to make a motion to accept the budget as presented.
Second.
Under discussion, I have one question before the vote. I just wanted to clarify, in 2022, so this year, we had put money or set aside that we could clear the trails and start clearing some of our trails in our community. And I just want to make sure in 2023, we can continue to do that and make sure that this budget can also allow us to continue with that service. And I don't know, Rex, if you could address that for us? That'd be great.
Sure. So there's not specific money set aside for trail clearing. It's being done by the workforce that we currently have in place, and we're able to do that this year with the additional public works person that was approved in last year's budget. So we should have enough staff. Through the Bike and Pet Committee and then through village board, we've identified the three trail areas that we're going to attempt to tackle this year through 2022 and then obviously the winter of 23. So we're good to go. We'll see, we'll see how that works out, but we plan on doing those three trails this coming season, you know, as long as we're not like getting a blizzard every other day.
Hopefully not.
I hope not either, not like Buffalo.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to double-check that as a second Bike and Pet Committee and want to make sure that went through.
I think the one comment I'd like to add too is the great job that the staff and the village has done and the number of people out here that work very, very hard every day. And if you watch all the area communities around and seeing how those budgets have been raised over this last year, and then the small increase in the budget and the additional services that community is getting for that small increase, I just really commend everybody for an unbelievable, great job in what everybody's done. You're working for the village.
Yep. Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution R-11-2-22, the Village 2023 budget. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Ten B, action on Class B beer license request for Bird BJS LLC, DBA Dodgeball/Green Bay. Chris.
So they're asking for a Class B beer license for 2740 Packerland Drive Suite F. All paperwork and corresponding fees have been filed, and I believe they're in attendance. So if you have any questions, and Public Works and Protection Committee voted unanimously to approve.
Okay, so I do have a question on the map. So I will need one person from the organization to come up. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Josh Delphage, 2740 Packerland Drive.
Okay, so I have a question. On your map, you have a yellowed-out area?
Yep, that's the portion of the dodgeball area that we rent.
Okay, but part of it goes into the parking lot.
We do have some outdoor seating that we were told to ride in in the event that we would want to have alcohol in that area or beer in that area.
Okay, but that is not on your application. The outdoor area is, it's on the map, but it is not in the description for outside. So would they have to amend their?
Yeah, so when, you know, because I had talked to someone about that. So I thought they decided not to because on your application, under premise description, you don't list the outside?
Correct. I think that that's what we unanimously decided not to do that.
Okay.
So yeah, I don't know if we have to change the color on that map at all, but yeah.
So it will not, you're?
No, we're not looking to serve outside at all.
Okay, you're not.
And if you want to do that, you can come forward in the warmer, you know, when it gets warmer.
Sure.
And extend your premise if you want.
Okay.
And then I also have a question on this side of the map. I don't know what all this yellow area is.
That is parking for dodgeball teams. So those are the areas that they're allowed to park.
So that's strictly parking?
Just parking.
That has nothing to do with your liquor license?
Correct.
Your beer license?
It's just parking.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, that was the only clarification I needed. Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
The only thing I want to add to that, too, this liquor license is only good for that premise.
Right.
It goes nowhere else. Being on the Public Works and Protection, we made that statement also. I'll move to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve as presented without the parking lot area in the license. Okay.
Yep.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Ten C, action regarding requested site plan review for the Element Building number four, parcel VA-460-P-113. Aaron.
All right, I'll just share my screen here to bring up the site plan for reference. This is proposed Element Apartments, building number four. This will complete the Element Apartments development on Element Way and Marvell Lane. Quick synopsis of the project. It is a four-story building, 92 total units. It does have underground and off-site at-grade parking. In terms of materials, similar to buildings one through three, it does have a masonry facade on the first floor and then like an LP SmartSide-type material for the upper floors, as permissible under the Plan Unit Development Ordinance specific to this property. Let's bring up a little additional information here. There's a small green space patio area out here that'll have a fire pit, grilling area. You see the additional parking right here, the entrance to the underground parking on the west side of the building right here. There will be a small utility shed to just house the snowblower, lawnmower, things like that for maintaining a property of this size. And then we are working with our engineer, heirs and associates as they redesign Element Way to include the angled parking that you see here. That was a request of the developers. It's understood that that is actually public parking because it will be within the public right-of-way, so it's not reserved for residents. It is public. However, they will be responsible for maintaining that for snow removal and so forth. I'll bring up just a example of the exterior materials here. Almost there. There we go. So as you can see, very similar in design and style to buildings one through three. In terms of recommended staff conditions, there were a few. First of all, the catch-all meet all applicable sections of 17-2-200 Ashwabnan Municipal Code, which are our site plan review requirements. The notes from engineering is that the village is not responsible for snow removal of on-street parking stalls. Heirs, associates in the village will coordinate with the development engineers' point of beginning on the new Element Way Road reconstruction project in 2023. In terms of stormwater management, this is tributary to the Ashland Avenue Pond. So if desired, buy into the Ashland Regional Pond at $6,631 per impervious acre. If not, submit a stormwater management plan for the site. In the past, they have bought into the Ashland Avenue Pond. From public safety, work with Ashwabnan Public Safety as construction is progressing to determine knockbox location. Coordinate with Ashwabnan Public Safety for acceptance testing of fire protection systems, hydrants, fire alarm sprinkler, et cetera. There were no comments from forestry or Bike and Pet. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Just for reference, Site Plan Review Committee and Planning Commission did recommend approval with staff conditions. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I believe Jeff Slindy, representing the developers, also available online.
Aaron, off-street parking, the village is not responsible for the snow removal. Does that still apply to the same rules and regulations of parking for the winter months? We don't park on streets in the winter months for snowfall reasons.
Overnight parking?
Yes.
Correct. Yes, that would still be considered on-street parking, so you could not park overnight in those locations.
Okay, okay. Being on the site plan, we, there wasn't much to beat up on this. It's pretty much the same as the first three buildings. They've been good to work with over the years, so if there's no other questions, I'll move to approve the project as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Under discussion, one other question for Aaron about the off-street parking. Will they have to clear it in a certain amount of time during the winter, like we do with our sidewalks and roads and things?
Right, it'll be within 24 hours of the snowfall.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Ten D, presentation by Keith Lucius and Kate Williams about the Performing Arts Center.
Okay, thanks for having us here. As we came last year and presented financials, and we want to do this on an annual basis to keep you up to date on the shared Performing Arts Center with the village and the school district. The school district, as a reminder, works on a budget that runs July through June, so these statements are July through June-based, not the same schedule as what the village runs. Overall, I won't spend a lot of time on financials because they're very positive. As you can see, we've built up a nice fund balance, and that's because of Kate's hard work. You can see there's several grants that she was able to attain, and we've been able to keep things going very well through the pandemic and all the issues that brought. One thing I will point out, if you look at the district's tax levy, you see that going up the last couple of years. That was done on purpose to try and build up some fund balance, because if you look in 1920, we had a negative fund balance. Auditors don't like that. The state doesn't like that, so I wanted to make sure we maintain a positive fund balance. You'll see the district's levy going back down for this coming year because we've built up that fund balance. We have some reserves in case we have another setback that would cause a shutdown or some loss of revenue, so we have some protection. With that said, I'm going to hand it off to Kate because she does all the work on getting these results, so.
Thanks, Keith. What I want to point out is this income statement that you have, looking at three years here, really tells the story of a performing arts venue during COVID and coming out of it. And if you just look at the numbers, the very bottom numbers, it tells a story. And we, as the Ashwabnan Performing Arts Center, came out very fortunately on that. So if you look at season 19 and into 2020, where we have that loss, that's the only year that this venue has seen a loss since we opened our doors, which is pretty phenomenal. And it wasn't, it wasn't huge. So, you know, coming out of that, going into the next year, we started getting some grants. It took a lot of time writing grant applications, and we were fortunate to receive quite a bit of funding. So going into that last season was really when a great number of grant funds came in, and we had our busiest year ever at the Performing Arts Center. That was a combination of a couple of things. One, we were starting to get audiences once again into the building. Two, we were one of the first venues in this area to open our doors back to the public. Warren Girdes wrote in the paper that we were the first venue in northeast Wisconsin to have a performance coming out of COVID. So it was at reduced capacity and masked and all the precautions, but we hit the ground running again. So when we look at this, we, having our busiest year ever and grant dollars coming in, that's why last year looks as strong as it did. For having a full-time staff of two, we really kicked butt to make that happen. We had over 40,000 people come through our doors last season. That's our highest attendance since we've opened. We had 315 usages of the venue. We served 377 unique zip codes, and that came from 21 unique states. So the majority of our population that we are serving is definitely Ashwabnan and Greater Green Bay, but we have made a place for ourselves on the map. People are learning about us, learning how to pronounce Ashwabnan. Keep working on that every time I go to a booking conference, so. And one of the things we also invested in technology-wise at the Performing Arts Center were ticket scanners. And I know some of you have come through the doors and seen those. Not only is it convenient for our patrons to be able to have mobile delivery of their tickets to their phones and have immediate access to those tickets and be able to share it with others, but we invested in it as a safety precaution coming, while we were in the midst of COVID. Traditionally, we have, we have a great pool of volunteers. We have about 100 community members who volunteer their time to be our ticket takers and our ushers. And they traditionally take a ticket, hold it, look at it, physically rip off a stub and hand it back to a patron. That's a lot of interaction between people when you're worried about germs. And so the ticket scanners takes that element out of the equation. A patron can simply show their phone, show their ticket, and an usher can scan it. So there's, that was the primary reason, but there's been a lot of other positives that have come out of that. People have taken to it very well. Over 85% of our tickets were sold electronically last year. And speaking of those great ushers, they donated over 4,700 hours of time last year to our Performing Arts Center. So we have a lot of community investment on various levels for this PAC, and I'm very proud to represent it, so thank you. Any questions?
I do have a question.
Yes.
In the income statement for purchased services.
Yes.
What does that include?
Purchased services primarily include the artist fees that we're paying for those artists to come through, but it will also include things like if we need to hire in an outside audio tech, lighting tech, anything like that, piano tuning, you know, purchase services. But the bulk of this is going to be artist fees.
Artist fees?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I should also just quickly point out that under revenue, where it says, you know, rental income and general sponsorship receipts, those numbers are artificially low because those are only representing unspecified revenues in those line items. So for example, rental income, the majority of that, which is around 40 grand, is appearing in the total performance revenue because they were categorized specifically for a specific performance. So the number that you're seeing under rental income, those are unspecified, that we weren't expecting, that came on the books later on, and we didn't specifically code them as such. Does that make sense? Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, first of all, proud of Ashwabnan coming out of COVID, you know, the whole, the Village of Ashwabnan, and I've said this before, our park and rec department did an outstanding job with that, and the Performing Arts Center did, our pool. I mean, I'm very proud of everything that everybody has done for that, and it definitely shows in this, so. Yeah.
Kate, one question.
Yep.
Supplies.
Yes.
How come that's way up? Did I miss something along?
No, I promise I didn't buy a bunch of pens and pencils that year. Rolled up into the supplies category is that ticket scanning equipment that we purchased that also include a one-time fee for hosting, the software for that. We also purchased additional musicians' chairs to accommodate some of the extra longtime users that we have renting the facility. We purchased conductor's stand, some, a couple of replacement microphones, and some pipe and drape. So it's a bit of a mishmash, but the highest expenditure was the ticketing scanning equipment.
So Gary, that gets a little confusing because our state rules define what has to be a supply and what's equipment. So these things are close, but not quite to the equipment category, so you'll see that supply number move around more, and that's why the equipment number is so low.
I noticed the equipment number is awful low, yes.
Yeah, so you're going to see that from year to year when we have these larger purchases, like the conductor stand, the chairs, things in the ticket scanning, that that's going to be in supplies, not equipment because of the way the state defines it for school district.
Okay.
I think if I could make one last statement, too, about this, you know, the 21-2022 season is an artificial number, right? So we came out of COVID, people were coming back, people were renting our facility because there were not other facilities available for rent that they had been normally using. So we saw increased rentals. We also saw great attendance, and part of that was people were eager to come and see things again, but there weren't other opportunities, so just for spending discretionary income and discretionary time. And what I mean by that is people weren't traveling yet, so they weren't going on vacation. Same reason we saw people putting money into their homes and things like that. So the opportunities to see entertainment and spend money discretionarily was limited last season, so we were a beneficiary of that spending. And so between, with the grant money and that factor from last season, I just want to keep our expectations for seasons after this in perspective of that, knowing that that's, there's an artificial high that happened this past year financially.
I know that right here, we're kind of focusing on all of the paid events and all the other events, but I think the one thing that we all have to realize is the real education thing here and what our students are getting out of the PAC is pretty amazing during the day and all the things that are going on there and the education that they're getting. The value that they're getting out of that is another great value of the PAC, so it isn't just the financials and everything, but it is really helping the students of Ashwabnan as well, and I know you're supporting that all the time, so thank you for that.
Well, thank you for saying it. I actually have a student at UW Stevens Point who will be my intern this summer because she graduated from Ashwabnan two years ago, decided to go into arts management, and will continue her education with me.
Excellent.
It also seems like a perfect time for a shameless plug for this high school musical that's going on this weekend.
Right now.
There's still two more shows. It is awesome. I was there this past weekend, so.
Guys and Dolls. Guys and Dolls, Friday and Saturday, 7:00 at night. Be there.
Well, you know, in the budget that we just passed, that's part of, you know, part of our property tax bill. I believe it's like 67 cents per thousand goes to the referendum debt, which is the PAC, the community pool, and our community center, so yeah.
That's great.
The residents did a great job in approving all that.
Yeah, I want to thank you guys for coming tonight and, you know, going through all this with us. Also, I want to thank Kate, you've been sending out emails almost monthly or so, kind of keeping us in the loop, so I appreciate that and encourage you to keep doing that.
I try to keep you posted, so.
Yes, it's nice to know what's going on up there, and I know it's very busy, so nice job.
Thank you. And apologies to Kelly because there have been, your emails bounce back to me, and I have to figure out why. So sometimes I think you're getting them and sometimes you're not, and it's not personal. I just thought about when you said that.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, well, thank you very much for the great presentation and keep up the good work there, Kate.
Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Ten E, consider discuss act on Village of Ashwabnan Ordinance Number O11-3-22, an ordinance creating no parking on Element Way. Patrick.
So this is an ordinance request from the Public Safety Department of restricting the parking on Element Way, primarily on the far east side of the street of Element Way on the, I guess, western and eastern portions of the eastern quadrant of Element Way. Reason for that is if you look at the attachment that I have included on the agenda item, it's probably the easiest way to see, under the ordinance, defined as best as I could where it prohibits, where the village would be prohibiting and restricting parking, and the attachment, the map that showed us the attachment to the ordinance really well, defines or lays out really well where the restrictions would be. So the red line from, on the two corners on the far eastern side of Element Way would be prohibiting parking at all times. The green line would be prohibited parking. Excuse me. The green line is prohibited parking. Sorry, lost my train, lost the agenda item here. Sorry.
Got some clarity?
I lost the agenda item on my.
Leaving his computer.
On my computer, yeah, excuse me.
Your screen may be a little different. So the green area would be, there would be no parking restrictions.
Right.
Correct. So the green area is parking, no parking restrictions, it's allowed at all times. The red area is prohibited parking at all times, and the yellow is prohibited parking only on Packer game days. Thank you, chief. Sorry. I need my crutch of this agenda item here. That's the, so, and the reason being where the restrictions are most prevalent on the far eastern side of Element Way is based on the width of the street. My understanding, talking with staff, especially on the corner, emergency vehicles coming through around that corner and coming through down on the eastern side of the Element Way. through around that corner and coming through down on the eastern side of the Element Way, when it gets jammed with cars, being how narrow or, or the width isn't as, as big as, I guess, normally would be with packed cars, it creates somewhat of a problem, problems for especially emergency vehicles. So, with that, I know I was working with Chief on this, and also they're in a little bit on it, and, and Brian as well, just discussed, just kind of discussing the actual, the width of the street and the create, the problems that it could cause with parking on that. So, with any questions, with, should any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer. Otherwise, I think, I don't know, Chief, just I think has indirect.
Yeah. So, as you can imagine, this, this whole section here gets packed with cars, especially on Packer Game Day, as well as a lot of time it goes in when the baseball team is here as well, the Rockers now, they park along here. So, we're trying to be cognizant of the new development going in here, allowing for parking, the angle parking that's going in on the, the north side of Element Way there. But, we want to be able to make sure that if we have to get fire apparatus through there, right now, when it's double parked, we can't do that, especially around that curve, when you have cars on both sides. We, there's no way we can get a fire truck around through there. So, that's why you see the red lines in the areas that they are. We don't want any parking there. And we tried to keep it, you know, allow parking for the tenants at, at Element Way, nearest to those locations as well, and then only restrict part of the street on Packer Game Days where we're having the issues of the double-side parking through there. So, that's the main purpose of that.
I was wondering why we don't just prohibit parking on the whole south side, especially with adding the, all the angle spaces on the north side. We're adding a lot more spaces there that, it's a narrow road, it's busy up there.
Yeah.
Just.
We're trying to be, trying to be cognizant of the businesses and stuff through there. I mean, they, they do kind of count on some of that roadway. My understanding is especially Sammy's counts on part of that roadway for customer parking as well. So, we're trying to be cognizant of them and their business.
And I think that the, the part of Element Way that's down closer to Oneida, the part that runs east-west, isn't that wider than the part that runs north-south? I think so.
And it may be now, but that section of roadway has planned for reconstruction. And so, that roadway width, when it's finished, that profile will be matching to the completed portion that runs north and south. So, traditional village street, face-to-face, I believe, is 37 feet. This street, if I'm not mistaken, Brian, is 32 feet face-to-face. So, there's five feet less of space on the shoulders for parking.
Well, the reason for this is just a narrow street here, and for safety reasons. All right.
Right.
All right. I don't see nothing wrong with it. There's no other questions. They'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and approve to, a motion and a second to approve ordinance number O-11-3-22. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10F, consider discuss act on Village of Ashwabnon ordinance, ordinance number O-11-1-22, an ordinance repealing managed market merchants. Patrick, we're gonna finally get this cleaned up.
All right. Do our best. So, the village staff is proposing a dramatic overhaul on managed markets and special events. So, basically, over the last few months, we've really seen somewhat of inconsistencies between regulating and defining what is managed market and what is special events. So, we kind of thought the best strategy going forward is clean everything up. And effectively, what this does, and over the next few agenda items, you'll see how this is all put together and how it all makes sense, is that we are merging managed markets with special events. So, the concept of special events, or excuse me, the concept of managed markets isn't going away. There'll still be one primary applicant for multiple vendors. Our street, for example, good, perfect example, dozens of vendors under one applicant. So, that managed market concept is still there. That's just now being combined with special events. So, you're not gonna, we're not gonna be calling it, assuming this is approved, we wouldn't be calling it a managed market anymore. It'd be essentially calling it a, a special event. So, in order to do that, the first step would be repealing managed market merchants, which this ordinance proposes just repealing the entire thing. And then, the next agenda item, we can discuss how that managed market is essentially merged with special events.
Took Public Works and Protection a little time to figure it out, but let's, let's get this one done right away and move to approve and get rid of it. And the next one will tell us the answer.
Right up.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and a second to approve ordinance number O-11-1-22. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10G, consider discuss act on Village of Ashwabnon ordinance number O-11-2-22, an ordinance repealing and recreating special events. Patrick?
All right. So, part, part two of the, I guess, fixing of the special events ordinance is essentially repealing and recreating the special event code that we have currently right now. But this, I guess, edits and recreating this code effectively creates a new special event definition. And then, in that special event definition, you'll see verbiage from the managed market merging in with the special event. So, again, special events and managed market are essentially formed under one authority, and that's under a special event. In this ordinance, the code is rewritten to put a purpose section in the code, expanding the definition of special events, and also giving an authority for the village to do so, as well as giving a penalty section for any violations of that. And under the authority, under section C, that discusses that the special events will actually be regulated by resolution. So, the code gives the village the authority to regulate it, but it will actually be, I guess, regulated and practiced under the resolution, which is part three. And we've, the staff believe that's the most efficient way to go forward. Any kind of changes to the special event policy can be done by resolution rather than bringing it back to update the code every time.
Move to approve is presented.
Second. Motion and a second to approve Village Ordinance number O-11-2-22. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10H, consider discuss act on the Village of Ashwabnon Resolution number R-11-1-22, a resolution approving a special event policy. Patrick?
Last portion of this is that the, the resolution is really, as I stated, is what, how the village is going to practice the special event policy. So, again, managed market and special events under one, and regulate it and practice under the resolution, the policy. The policy is submitted from the staff, really lays out in detail, really, the step-by-step guidelines for an applicant. When it needs to be, when the application needs to be submitted, the permits, the fees, if there's alcohol to be involved, that there's any tent applications, if there's insurance requirements needed. And one thing to, that was, that was inserted, the old special events that ordinance did not have, was village staff and village board input. So, based on the size and what the special event is actually going to be doing, the village board can have approval, or, or if not needed, the village staff will have approval as, as how we kind of described it as a special event committee. So, for example, if the special event is going to have alcohol, or maybe in the policy it states fireworks, or could draw a crowd more than 3,000, think of a concert, or street closures, that would be to be board, board approval, and the board will have input rather than just approving by staff. So, think of events that have street closures that trustee might be uncomfortable with. Trustee will then be able to have input and have discussion with the applicant if, if it needs to come before the board to have, I guess, permission to, to run the special event. So, there's a lot of, I guess, more detailed just descriptions on what to do for the applicant. I think it's a much more of efficient way when the applicant comes in, we give the application, and we also give the packet as well of the special event policy. Joel, feel free to chime in with.
Yeah, I'll just kind of expand upon what Patrick is identifying. So, there's three really significant changes to the policy as it relates to what we currently practice. The first change is the duration in which an applicant must submit their materials to the village. Previously, it was 30 days. Now, it's 60 or 90 days based on the nature of the event. So, a Class A or a Class B event. That proposed change is being done so that if it's a significant event, so a Class B event, 90 days, it requires village board approval because it likely is going to require alcohol at, on a public facility or a street closure. So, think about a major marathon happening in the community that's going to be closing several streets for a significant duration of the day. The village board would then have the ability to approve or deny that, that request because of the impact that it has to the overall community as well as the potential risk for liability. It also, that 60 or 90 days gives the applicant sufficient time to provide notice to individuals that may be impacted by the event. So, if you recall, with a 30-day notice, concert at Lambo Field for their summer kickoff series draws a big crowd, we close Ridge Road, how much time is allowed to notify the area residents? There wasn't a sufficient amount of time to do that. So, by moving that up to that 90-day period, it gives sufficient time for that applicant to notify the residents of the impact of the event. And then, also with that, obviously, we do classify the individual events. So, based on the level of risk. So, if it's a smaller-scale event, maybe no alcohol, there's no fireworks or amusement rides, pretty easy. That's very approvable, that, that can be done by staff. The larger-scale events, road closures, increased risk of liability, or to, to health and safety, those would require some additional oversight by the village board. I also want to just mention, it came up at the Public Works and Protection Committee, about what is, what is a special event and what is not. So, the example that came up at committee was a church picnic. Does a church picnic have to apply now for a special event? And the answer to that is generally no, if the church picnic is held on church grounds. So, like Nativity Church has a church picnic, it's held on church grounds, they do not close any streets, they don't take up any parkland or anything like that. There's no public space for that event to occur on. It doesn't require a special event permit. It may require, that type of an event may require other permits, like a tent permit or a picnic license for serving alcohol, but it wouldn't be under definition a special event. Art Street would be a special event because it takes place on a village-owned property, and as Patrick described in the last agenda item, instead of getting two permits, one for managed market, one for special event, something, an event like Art Street would only need the special event permit because a managed market would qualify under that definition. So, kind of cleans it up, expedites the process, if you will, so you don't have to go through multiple permitting for similar or like events. So, with that, I'll answer any questions too that the, that the board may have.
I think that the, the direction this is going in is, is very good. My concern is, and you can tell by the confusion already, we have to do something to be able to communicate out to the public that here's what's going to be required. We can't hand them an ordinance and say, okay, read through this and figure out what you need to do. We're gonna have to provide something to say, all right, what kind of event are you having? Here's your instructions on what you're going to need to provide in the, in the timeframe. Some, something that's really dumbed down and simple so that they can consume it and understand it. What we're trying to do here in this ordinance is encompass everything, which then you have everything in there, and it's going to be tough for people out there to be able to understand, okay, what do I gotta do for my event? What I'm trying to do. I think we have to put together something to clarify it out to, out to the general public, is my thought on this, so that they can understand, here's, here's what I have to do in order to make this happen. If we hand them the ordinance, all you're gonna get is just a barrage of questions because they're gonna read stuff that's gonna say, oh, does, is, do I do this? I know even when I was reading through it, I was a long way down before I even understood what a, what an A event was and a B event was. And there was all this, all this information above, above, okay, if you have an A event, you gotta do this, you gotta do that, you got a B event, you gotta do this, get it. But I'm like, okay, well, is my event an A event or a B event? I didn't even know that to wait. I, I just think we have to have a better set of instruction out to the general public so they get it.
Yeah. I think the policy is the foundational aspect of it, and one of the things that come from that, so Chris is, has a form basically, that really kind of guides the applicant step-by-step with specific questions. So, are you planning on fireworks? Yes. Okay. Then, these are the things you need to do. Are you planning on serving alcohol? Yes. Okay. Here are the things you need to do. So, it just kind of gives you a Q and A, and then gives you direction based on the answers, yes or no, as to what additional steps you may or may not need to take in order to apply.
So, the.
You know, one of the.
Go ahead, Gary.
One of the questions that came up at Public Works was the timing of the 60 to 90 days. We were concerned to get the public to know that this is changed, so that they're well aware of it. And I believe it was recommended to staff to somehow, we kind of know the people that run these events from year to year anyway, to give them notice. What we did as far as changing is, was I think the change is good. It narrows it down into pretty much, here's what it is. And like Greg explained, they know what they have to do just by reading the description. But, it's to get the public to know, hey, we changed this. You, you've got 90 days now in some events, 60 on the others, but we want them to know that way ahead of time so that they can prepare themselves for that. So, I think staff will take care of that from what we're understanding at Public Works.
Yeah. I think we talked about sending notification out to last year's applicants or routine applicants for, just to inform them that they no longer have a 30-day window to work from. It's now either a 60 or 90-day window. Most of these events are already planning, and they're already in communication with us. So, it's, it shouldn't be overly burdensome for them. So, as an example, Cellcom, which routinely sets up in Ashwabnon, they've been meeting and discussing this event with Public Safety already in advance of applying for their application.
Yeah. As I say, a lot of these big events, they're planning year ahead of time. So, but I agree with Gary, getting the word out to them that we now have a tighter timeline or, I guess, a longer timeline. I like the policy that all the staff is gonna, you're gonna form that special events committee and have a member from each of the departments that is impacted. And I would assume that someone, you know, maybe there's a run, they might reach out to Rex, or they might reach out to Chris, and they're the ones that are gonna get everything rolling and started and give them the information and move them through the process. So, I think the policy is good, and I'm sure that the application forms will help to clarify that for people coming in to have the special events.
How does this affect something as small as a block party? It's minimal impact, but we, we've done in our neighborhood, we've done it multiple times over the years. But, we do have at request roadblocks. Now, you're, it's sometimes something small like this, it, I don't want to say it's a last-minute planning event, but they're not, they're definitely not doing it, you know, a year out or even maybe six months out. What, how does, how would it affect something just as small as that, but it requires something as simple as a roadblock? But it seems to me this falls underneath the 60-day or 90-day.
Yeah. We, we actually talked about that. So, block parties and in fact, like neighborhood-wide rummage sales were considered as, should those two elements be included in the definition of a special event? And based on experience from existing staff and the experience that the village has had over the years with block parties or neighborhood rummage sales, it was felt from a staff perspective that those two elements specifically should not be included as part of the definition. And so, a block party would not be considered a special event. It simply would not require an application or go through that formal process. They can continue to do what they do now as requests a street closure, temporary street closure through Public Works and Public Safety. That street closure can occur, and it's not, not considered a special event.
Okay.
And that was done intentionally based on what staff had experienced in the past from a direction from, from village board.
Okay.
Okay.
There's no other questions. They'll move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the Resolution number R-11-1-22, approving the special events policy. More discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. This is gonna be easy now, because this has been a controversial issue. Lots of questions, lots of questions on special events and managed market. Okay. Thank you. 10I, Blue Ridge Street Lighting Addition Consideration. So, this was brought to us, I don't know, two months ago or so. A resident on Blue Ridge had asked about street lighting on Blue Ridge. So, it was brought forward, and we discussed it internally, and Joel said he was gonna get some numbers from WPS, and here we are now. So, I'll let you take it. So, I'll let you take it.
Yep. So, if you recall back in August, we presented, I think it was a resident that reached out to trustee Zerbal at one point about the possibility of adding an additional streetlight to Blue Ridge Drive. That particular section of road in which the resident was requesting a streetlight at mid-block was an area in the neighborhood that did not currently have a mid-block streetlight located at it. If you recall also from that discussion, I think it was trustee Krieger that had asked us to review Valley View as well and whether there were mid-block lights there. So, the map that's being presented on the screen, and I believe copies were given out, Brian, to the trustees, indicates kind of this general neighborhood. The purple areas are those where existing streetlights are located. The green X is the location of that mid-blocks, mid-block streetlight which was requested by that resident. There are additional decorative lighting beyond just the typical overhead street lighting in and around the title town area, and those are just marked out in those purple bars. As we noted back in August, typically, the village installs streetlights at intersections, curves, and at the end of cul-de-sacs for streets that are not considered arterials or collectors. So, Blue Ridge Drive would be considered what is called a local street, and so typically we would only post streetlights at intersection curves or at cul-de-sacs. Now, in this particular neighborhood, some additional streetlights have been added at mid-block locations for whatever reason. But typically, what we do is, in the past, we've sought out permission from the area property owners for the location of that streetlight. And so, that may be the result of, when you look at this map, why some streetlights are kind of offset from center of mid-block is because certain residents may not have, be willing to locate that streetlight. So, we did receive a cost proposal from WPS, which was included in your packet to install the streetlight. And then furthermore, the direction from the board was to go out and seek, basically, approval or acceptance from the area neighbors for that additional streetlight. I did send Brian out. I probably shouldn't have done that because it was like his first thing that he got to do in meeting residents. But Brian did go out and hand-deliver a notice to residents in that area, in particular at, I can pull up the map, I think it's 1189, if I'm not mistaken, between 1187 and 1189, or 1197 and 1189. In addition, that notification was sent out to the areas across the street on the north side of the road between 1198 and 1184. As you know, I think some trustees received notification from the resident at 1197. They were strictly or strongly opposed to that additional streetlight. In addition to that, there are other residents that had some skepticism, I would say, certainly some that would be willing to locate a streetlight around the neighborhood, but not necessarily in their yard. So, we clearly do not have a consensus from any of the property owners that a streetlight should be located in or near their property, which we suspected back in August when we discussed this with the board. In addition to that, I will note that through WPS, they did identify on this map on the screen here, the location between 1197 and 1189, or 1192 and 1184 on the north side of the road as the preferred locations for WPS to locate the streetlight. And that's primarily related to where power is located in the rear yard easement and whether or not an easement would be necessary in order to extend power to the streetlight pole. So, on those two locations, an easement would not be required, and that's why that's the preferred location. If we choose a different location outside of those two, it may require an easement to which WPS would then need to secure before a streetlight could be located. So, with that, again, this is kind of outside of standard village policy as it relates to locating a streetlight mid-block. We did not get a thorough consensus for acceptance from the area neighbors. In fact, we had one resident that was pretty adamantly opposed to that particular request. So, at this point, it's really the board's discretion as to whether it would like to locate a streetlight in that mid-block section of Blue Ridge Drive.
Well, when this came up, I was totally against it. But now that you show this to me, I don't see any problem in doing it because all long blocks, and I happen to live in one of those where it is not a block, it could be two blocks long, we do have lights midway through all these streets in the area that I live in. Why is, why, I guess my question, why was the street left out when they were installing lights? You know, because every street has one in it, in mid-block. So, my proposal would be to put it there and be consistent with the rest.
I, um, this is a real interesting one for me. I had one resident call and express their, kind of their opposition to it, although they did a great job presenting their points, all legitimate. But they also went out of their way to say they don't necessarily oppose it. They weren't crazy about the idea. But they did ask if they could possibly, if it was going to happen, if they could move it to the other side of the driveway, they would feel much more comfortable that's not going to shine light into their, I think it was their upper bedroom area. Me personally, I'm kind of pro-streetlights. I got one across the street from my house. I think it adds a great element to safety.
Right.
In any block. Although, I have a hard time forcing on somebody as well. But I made sure the last few nights, I kind of canvassed the area, drove around, parked a little bit, just kind of observed. And actually, on the way here tonight, I did the same thing. I drove through the neighborhood again. And when you pay attention, it is extremely dark. And the fact that a point where, it was ironic, it happened this way on the way here, there was two people going for a walk, which you see more and more, people are outside walking all the time now, walking in the same direction I was driving, and I did not see them until I was right on top of them. Unfortunately, they were all, they were wearing just completely black.
Yeah.
With no lighting. I mean, it wasn't the brightest thing to do, but, but having said, and then as soon as you get to the next block, you notice the contrasting difference between the two blocks. In the end, to me, it comes down to a safety issue, and it's not just a Packer weekend issue. I think it's just an everyday 365 issue on that block.
Yeah, I had the resident contact me from 1189. I don't know if that's the same one that contacted you, Patty. And like Chris said, she isn't real excited about the light in the location, but would be okay if it was on the other side. So, and it sounds like with Brian going out and you guys doing some additional research that maybe at this point, we should even table this and wait and allow you to work with the residents a little bit more and see if you can get more consensus. You know, maybe if it's really, I mean, I'm totally with the safety thing, Chris. I think lighting it up is a good thing. And when you look at this map, it's just ironic. When I was driving around, it's like everyone is in almost the same position that we're proposing this one. So, it's nothing out of the ordinary. But I think the residents, with the late delivery of the letter, they weren't happy with that. So, maybe having a neighborhood meeting and just talking to them and saying, you know, "What do we want to do here?" and seeing if we can get some consensus. Because I do believe lighting needs to be out there, but like Chris said, I don't want to force it on someone that maybe isn't real excited about it.
That's exactly the way I feel about it, too, Tracy, is that, you know, I drove it last night on my way home from work, and it is dark. The Packer game, I don't think, is the problem. When there is the Packer game, you have all the headlights from the cars, so that's not really the problem. But like Chris said, when people are walking just down the road, the item was brought up to me, if we have to move it, there is issues with the drains from the sump pumps. Would you like to come up and state your name and address for the record, please?
Janine Kramer. I live at 1181. I've been there like 40 years. In our backyards, which if you put it at 1189, which is what I would prefer, because I already have the lights from the Packers apartment shining in our house on our upper floor. So, if you put another one on 1184, it would be shining at our house, too. So, one on that side shining the other way would be better for us, but I'm sure it annoys someone else. But, and people, like, in our backyards, our sump pumps go back to a drain. So, if they bury the power, I just wanted to make you aware that, don't break that drain because that happened like a year ago, and then everybody's sump pumps were backing up because the drain was broken when someone had their power to their house put underground. So, just if you do put it at 11, between 1189 and, I'm sorry, what's it? Make sure that WPS doesn't break that line for us.
I think, you know, when Tracy made the comment, too, about maybe we could have a neighborhood meeting and get a consensus from the neighbors, I think that might be the...
I think what needs to be talked about, too, I think there's a perception that it's just Packer games. I, too, drove the area last night. I think we maybe have a different issue because I also have driven through that neighborhood when we've had to pick up people after Packer games saying, "Yeah, you can't, it's pretty difficult." And I'm surprised we haven't had an accident at this point, at least that I'm aware of, that anybody has gotten hit there. But I'm surprised they haven't. But I think this is more after driving the neighborhoods that we need to look at it more from an overall lighting of that area. And Packer games, we probably should be discussing with the Packers about getting some additional lighting into those neighborhoods for the Packer games. I would not be thinking that we need to light that up like a commercial street, but I think you could bring in temporary lighting for just those couple of events so that there'd be some temporary lighting that could be turned on for the event and then turned back off type of thing. And in my mind, the Packers should be helping with that type of a situation. Because their parking lot's going away, their parking lot is becoming our neighborhoods. So, it's only fair that they actually are contributing to the safety within their parking lot, which is now our neighborhoods.
Okay. So, does anybody want to make a motion to table it, or what would you like to do?
Well, I know Tracy mentioned about tabling it. I don't disagree with getting more input, but on something like this, my gut feeling tells me that if people were really adamant, I was surprised I only had one phone call on it, and the person's not totally against it. I mean, I would have...
The people I talked to were against it.
Okay.
There were, I got two phone calls, so...
Okay.
And I got a phone call, too. So, it might have been the same person, I'm not sure, but I think it might be good for us to just get another group and maybe, maybe bring this back, back to committee of some sort, and then invite those people to that meeting so it can be discussed. And then we can send out actual invites to them and say, "Hey, come to this meeting." And if we only have the one person show up, then we got our answer.
That's not a bad idea, but at that meeting, I would like to be able to, what I'm afraid's going to happen is, the meeting's a great idea to get people together with, to present both sides of it. So, you don't have one group of people that are fear mongers, that, and I'm not, you know, that are just making statements that aren't necessarily true about, about the impact of the lights that are going to be on their, in their rooms and things like that. I have one right across the street from me, and it's, Gary was saying the same thing. It's not that big of an impact, and I think the safety issue way overweighs.
You are so right, Chris.
The light, the lighting, and maybe, and explain to them in terms that, here's the benefits of it, and here's what not to worry about irrationally.
I think a lot of them are remembering the old-style streetlights.
That's, exactly.
And these new-style streetlights are directed, they're down towards the roads, you know, it isn't as bad, but, but I really think that that needs to be communicated better to, so that we're not just picking a bunch of residents off and they're about really nothing.
Right, right, exactly.
You know, you heard about, I think I counted, you heard from three residents. How many residents live on this street? Didn't you address anybody?
Yeah, and in fairness to them, they were not notified. In all fairness to every resident on that block, they were not notified. So, I think we probably reached out to a total of five, six?
Right.
Six or seven homeowners.
Right.
That were in that immediate kind of vicinity of where that proposed streetlight would be.
But let's not forget, too, it's not just about them either. A lot of people walk these streets. I do.
Right.
I take our dog for a walk all the time, and a lot of the time it's at night. You know, it's a safety issue for everybody.
That's what I'm looking at, is a safety issue.
Oh, it definitely is.
Every other street has it.
Yeah, every street has it, and it is a huge safety issue. I mean, a light adds 30% more safety crash reduction, so it is a big deal to have that out there. I just think stepping back a little bit and maybe notifying all the residents, having a small meeting.
Right.
And hopefully, it'll be there, and we can still go ahead and put it there. You know, it's our right to do that, but I just think the communication maybe needs to be a little better to them, to the residents to get...
And I agree, to maybe alleviate some concerns.
Right, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I think it can be worked through, and I think even the woman that I talked about isn't opposed, like Chris said. She's willing to work with us on it, so...
If it's agreeable to the board, I think, just to kind of help expedite this particular topic, what we could do is, is table action on this item, refer this back to staff to coordinate a neighborhood meeting, if you will, or a neighbor meeting with the residents on that block. We can certainly do that in advance of committee or the next board meeting and have that conversation with them. If you would like to formally refer this back to committee, we can do that as well. I would recommend taking it back to Public Works and Protection as being the most logical committee for this particular item. We could, in fact, have the neighborhood meeting prior to the next committee meeting and then have that item on the official committee meeting. So, the neighborhood meeting would be more or less used to allow them to come in, ask questions, and maybe get some of the technical details of the proposal. And then at committee, they can voice their concerns to members of the committee, which would then provide the recommendation to the board. And then that gives the board the opportunity then to take that item up on the meeting, at their meeting on the 13th.
What about just sending a written notice to all the residents on that street and see what you get on a request from that?
Yeah, I think what we would do is...
Keep it simple first.
Certainly, send written communication to them indicating that we'll have kind of an open-house informational meeting if they want to come in and ask questions prior to the next committee meeting. If they would like to issue their comments to us in writing, via email, written note, or by telephone, that's fine, too. We'd be glad to accept those comments, and then we'll present that information and provide opportunities for those residents to provide formal feedback to the committee at their meeting on December 6th. Then, at that point, there has been a lot of opportunity for residents to speak their mind and provide us with input on that proposal.
So, how to make a motion to table it, send it back to staff to get a neighborhood meeting together, and then in conjunction or before Public Works.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table this and have a neighborhood meeting prior to Public Works and Protection. Any more, well, we can't discuss. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, 10 J. So, trustee Steve Kabaki resigned today because he moved out of his wards nine and 10. So, we now have discussion about the appointment process to fill the vacancy of Office of Trustee for Wards nine and 10.
I will recuse myself from any discussion.
Okay.
Thanks, Jay. So, as Mary stated, with the now effective resignation of Steve Kabaki, there's an opening in Wards nine and 10. As the board knows that in, I think it was November of 2021, that there's a state redistricting, essentially, redistricting Wards seven and eight, nine and 10 were, those were the ones that affected, that were affected, which created trustee Krieger's residence now in Wards nine and 10. So, come next term, trustee Krieger would no longer be able to run in Ward seven and eight, but however, based on state statute, he is currently allowed to serve the remainder of the term until the term is up. However, now that there's an... until the term is up. However, now that there's an opening in wards nine and 10, that creates an ample opportunity to have an appointment of already a board member in that current ward. So effectively, the board has a couple of options. One, they, the board could leave the wards nine and 10 without a trustee until the term is up and a new trustee would run in 2024. The second option would be to open the, I guess, trustee position for applications. So if that could be a motion to open that for applications for anyone who wanted to throw their hat in the, to be considered, I suppose. However, the most viable option would be the third option. And staff would recommend to, I guess, appoint, it's obviously at the board's discretion, but to appoint already trustee Krieger to wards nine and 10. Again, effectively, he's already living in wards nine and 10 due to the redistricting. He's already a board member. I think that is the most efficient and effective for the village. So if that is the course to take, option three, the motion would be to appoint Jay Krieger as trustee towards nine and 10 with the condition he resign from wards seven and eight, which will be the next item.
I'll move to approve trustee Jay Krieger to wards nine and 10.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint trustee Jay Krieger to the office of wards nine and 10 trustee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you.
So we don't have the option of just giving them all four wards?
Darn it.
No. You do not have that option.
Good thought, Chris.
So does he now have to...
Yes, when I call the next one, I will...
Okay, discussion and possible action on the appointment process to fill the potential vacancy of the office of trustee wards seven and eight.
Okay, so now that there, that trustee Krieger's been appointed to wards seven or nine and 10, excuse me, that was, there was a condition that trustee Krieger resign from wards seven and eight. So formally, we would need trustee Krieger to announce his resignation right now from wards seven and eight.
I will formally resign in my position of trustee for wards seven and eight effective today.
And the reason for that is trustee, trustee Krieger provided his resignation letter to Kirktesky. However, that was effective in December 13th, I believe. However, now with the expedited resignation for trustee Kubaki, we just needed it on the record that he has resigned. So trustee Krieger of wards nine and 10 is official. So with that said, now there's an opening for ward seven and eight. So again, the board has a couple of options. One, it remains vacant for the remainder of the term. Two, the board could make a motion to open the trust, or the vacancy for applications. Or the third would be to appoint, basically appoint from within. If the, if the board feels it appropriate that there's already names in consideration and want to bring them forward, that's perfectly fine. There's nothing in the state statutes requiring that the board open a vacant position for a trustee to applications. So it's when, it's what's in the board's discretion with what the board wants to do to fill that spot. So certainly up for considerations if the board needs help making a motion on what is best based on their decisions. Be a little creative and I can certainly assist on that.
So two years ago, we had, seven and eight were open and we had, I believe, eight people that applied for it and Jay was appointed to it and he has since been reelected. I have all those applications. If you would like me to just appoint from within, I could do that. Or, you know, we can call them, or we can, like you said, we could leave it open, we could, so.
Now, keep in mind, right, if a name is brought forward, the board would vote to appoint. The entire board would appoint for the trustee as well.
Right.
You have, you have some applications right now, you're saying?
Yeah, they're the ones that were from two years ago.
Okay, okay.
There might be people though that have moved in in the last two years who might be interested. Why wouldn't we just put it out like we did for this district, one and two, you know, open it up, let whoever's interested apply. It's a really quick timeframe, right? I mean, it happens in December.
We could...
I would recommend, I mean, like Mary said, when Jay was appointed, we had a lot of good candidates applied in his ward and we went through the whole interview process. So, you know, I would recommend, you know, me and Mary reaches out to them and see how many are still interested and if they would be willing to fill the spot and maybe make a recommendation back to the board, who you think would fill the spot the best and the board makes an approval. You know, they were interested before. I hate to just redo it all again because there was quite a bit of interest and, you know, reach out to them, see if they're still interested.
Yeah, there were some really, there were some really good candidates.
Yeah, they were.
At that time, I think it'd be great for Mary to reach out to them and see if they're still interested. That's probably the key thing to find out.
You know, if we had some real good candidates, how come they didn't run for the position the last time?
That's the thing too.
Yeah, that's why, are they not interested? I don't know.
You know, I, you know, this position can be taken care of right now as far as I'm concerned.
And I'd rather open it up to anybody who is interested. It feels a little behind the scenes or something to me to just go with people who applied two years ago or, you know what I mean?
Yep.
I mean, we could have Mary reach out to the ones that applied and just see if there's an interest and then we could also open it up and see if we get any more that way and then go from there.
It might solve itself if nobody in addition applies other than the people who were interested before, then you get credit for having invited anybody who's interested and you still get the people you already interviewed.
Yep.
How long are you going to keep it open? Till the next board meeting? You know, I personally like to see a full board all the time to make some decisions we got to make. If you're sitting here with four board members and you're making a decision, that ain't right in my opinion.
It says in here by December 13th.
Sure.
Meeting, we would be interviewing people.
Sure. Recommendation could be if there's more than one applicant interested, depending on the board votes, could be interviews by the next board meeting and also appointment by the next board meeting as well. So effective January, there'd be a full board. If it gets to that point with more than one applicant, a person interested.
Seeing it's such a short notice to December 13th, let's, let's run with that. And that gives everybody a chance, but, you know, we close it off then.
So we would have to open it up and we would probably have to have the interviews at the 13th, so we would have to close it.
Yeah, my recommendation would be, we would close it by noon on that Friday, the 9th. We would know that the item would be placed on the agenda for the 13th.
Yep.
And if the packets go out in advance of that, we would need to just amend the, the agenda to reflect the applicants that we receive. That gives everybody a full, a full two weeks. We'll send notice out through our communication channels this week and then our electronic newsletter will go out some point next week. So people will have information in front of them for about a week before the deadline would pass. And then that would allow Mary or whomever to reach out to those candidates that applied previously to see if they still are interested in maintaining their eligibility.
So the motion would be, that's the, which the board would be to open applications for the vacant trustee position for ward seven and eight.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, motion and a second. Discussion.
Under discussion. Just that if we're going to hold interviews again, maybe keep them again at a separate time than a village board member, especially if we're putting them on right away.
They wouldn't go on till January 1.
Okay, sounds good.
Right, just to answer the question, most likely the, the selection process would interview selections December 13th and then appointment in January.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10L, distribution of state required housing fee and housing affordability reports. Erin.
All right. This is the just annual distribution of the state required housing reports under 2017 Wisconsin Act 243. Every municipality of 10,000 people or greater is required to prepare and distribute these reports to the elected officials. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. This is just a information purposes only.
Erin, how do we fit with other communities? Is that a question? I mean, is it a viable question to ask?
I guess that's a pretty broad question.
Well, I mean, there's got to be some type of percentage per capita to, are we in the ballpark or are we out?
Yeah, in terms of our, our fees, we're in the lower end, certainly within the county.
We need more housing.
No, we, we're doing well in our diversity of housing. In terms of the two reports, one is for the fees that we charge.
Oh, oh, okay.
And our fees are, I think we're in a good spot with our fees right now. We're not too high, we're not at the lowest. We're probably below average, which is where we want to be with our fees. And then in terms of the housing affordability, housing affordability is a, a major issue, not just in Ashwabanon or Brown County, Northeast Wisconsin, but the country. It's something I think we've done a good job of trying to diversify our housing stock with a range of apartments. We do have the Berkshire Ashwabanon project on Mike McCarthy Way, which is providing affordable senior and workforce housing. So I think we're doing our part to try to tackle some of the affordable housing issues. Some of those issues are outside our control. Rising interest rates, rising construction costs, those are all items that we can't address directly, but we certainly can try to be as efficient as possible in our review process and our permit fees.
Okay, well, that's a good answer.
Erin, can I, this is for last year then? This is a report for last year's housing, is that correct?
Correct. It is for 2021.
Okay. So then on the top of page 147, it talks about the, basically the sports entertainment area and the number of apartments that were added. So in last year then, we had 548 new apartments and townhouses that came up in that area in the sports entertainment area, if I'm reading that correct?
I need to take a look at it. My page numbers don't match up with yours.
Or it's like 10, 18, let's see. Page five on yours, it looks like, top of five. The zone for other uses but suitable for residential development section.
So that goes back to the last number of years we've done these reports. So that's a cumulative total within that area.
Okay, so that's several years. And that does not include some of the new ones coming up. So it wouldn't include Berkshire that you just mentioned.
So that would, those will be completed in 2023, so that is included in there?
That's included in the 548.
Correct.
So the 548 includes projects that are done or, and the ones that we anticipate that have been approved.
Correct. The ones that have been approved and will be completed in 2023.
Okay, all right. So I looked at that number, I'm like, holy cow, that's a lot. And I was thinking that was one year that that was all put in.
Yeah, right. No, it's cumulative for all the projects within that zoning district.
Okay. Thank you. And it was well done report, by the way. It was interesting to read.
Thank you.
That was information only. Thank you. Erin. 10M, consider discuss act on a recommendation from the Bike and Pet Committee to conduct a corridor study along Holmgren Way between Lombardi Avenue to Cormier Road. Joel.
Okay, thank you. This particular item, as Mary had mentioned, was a recommendation from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. They've been discussing this topic for the better part of the last couple of months. It is directly related to conversations they've had about near miss crashes, some, some minor pedestrian related crashes on the north end by the Sports and Entertainment District, and then the accessibility of pedestrians crossing Holmgren Way, in particular near the Capital Credit Union Park during baseball or other large scale events at, at that stadium. Brown County Planning is the area's MPO or Metropolitan Planning Organization. As the MPO, they do conduct studies within what are called functionally classified roadways. So roadways that are mapped as either arterials or collectors to the state that would be eligible for state or federal funding. Brown County does assist in planning efforts to possibly provide enhancements, provide improvements to those corridors to improve safety and functionality of those areas. So the committee reached out to Cole Rungy, the planning director at Brown County, and inquired about his availability to conduct such a study, to which point Cole had asked the committee to put together a scope of work to which is included as part of the attachment in the packet. This would be done gratis and so Brown County would not charge the village for this study as, as the MPO and as a functionally classified road. There is no charge back to the municipality. Ultimately, what the committee is looking to do is, is really just study this area to identify if there are opportunities to improve multimodal transportation enhancements for pedestrians and bicyclists, as well as improve crossing connections to points of interest. Again, Capital Credit Union Park and some of the parking conditions that we have on the north end of the corridor. So with that, I'll answer any questions the board has about the study. Cole would be available to conduct it in 2023. So we do anticipate a draft report back to the committee sometime in the latter part of summer, first part of fall of next year.
So I was contacted by some of the businesses down there. This would only be to conduct a study of pedestrian crossing, correct?
It is going to look at the entire corridor. So it's going to look at multimodal transportation issues throughout the corridor. So that's going to be pedestrians, that's going to be bicyclists, that could be transit in general because Holmgren Way, that section of Holmgren, Holmgren Way is on a fixed route. So it could certainly take into consideration all modes of transportation within that corridor. And if there is something that could be done to enhance the usability of that corridor for those different modes of transportation, they would be considered as part of the study.
So let's just pick something really crazy and wild. Say they, they decide that they're going to do three bump outs for bus pickups. Who's paying for that?
Again, the, any improvements that are done as a result of the study would be obligated by the village. And so the study itself is just providing recommendations. At the end of the day, the village itself, the board in particular, would have to execute whatever recommendations are being provided. And it would be based on the timeline and the discretion that the village determines. So if it's adding bump outs for, or cut ins, if you will, for mass transit pickup spots, or maybe bump outs at intersections to reduce the length of road crossing for pedestrians, or the concept of road dieting, or limiting lanes or anything to that effect, any of those enhancements that may be recommended as part of the study, those would have to be executed by the board and it would be at their discretion to do so.
So we would control that with the budget?
Absolutely, yeah.
Well, just to add a little bit, as the chair of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, you know, we've been talking about Holmgren Way, different aspects of it. So we had some concerns that was brought up from public safety about the north end. So the more of the, where the bars are and where the entertainment areas about the lighting up there and how hard it was to see people. And we just talked about that with Blue Ridge. So we worked with public safety and the engineering department and some better lighting was put up there. There's pedestrian signage up on the north end that is so faded that it's just not doing its service anymore. So that needed, that was something that came up through Bike Pet. The southern end, some of the things that came up to our committee were, had to do with the Rocker Stadium and access to it, not only for pedestrians and bicyclists, but for motor vehicles as well. And having safe access to that corridor for all traffic users. So we would be looking, or the study, my understanding from Cole, would be looking at not only multimodal, but also vehicular movement in the corridor because they obviously impact the multimodal. You know, we just talked about the housing report and when Holmgren Way was built, it was very different than it is today. We have four, what did I say, 458 or 548, or whatever the heck it was, new apartments in that area. There's a lot more people wandering and walking in that area and we want to encourage that. So to have a study about, of this corridor would just be an asset for us to make some good informed decisions. So it continues to be a good place for people to move by all modes of transportation. And that's really what the study would do and would provide us with some really good information from an expert to say, this is what we could do. It's not tying us to anything, Mary, or saying we have to do this or have to do that. It's just giving us some really good options and ideas on things that we could do. And some of it's low hanging fruit easy and some of it may be a little more major. But the outcome would be a corridor that is accessible to all potentially and safe for all. That's really what the Bike Pet Committee is, is interested in. So, and I know we have a gentleman here from... So, and I know we have a gentleman here from one of the businesses in that area, and I don't know if we could open the floor, if you would like to speak at all. And make a motion, open the floor.
Second. Motion and a second to open the floor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. State your name and address, please, for the record.
Ben Ganther, is 686 Mike McCarthy Way. So as Tracy said, I'm one of the co-owners of Odyssey Climbing and Fitness, so the new climbing gym going up east of Holmgren Way on Mike McCarthy Way. And just to kind of reiterate the point that was made, so we have, as we said today, almost 500 pre-sold founding memberships for folks that are going to be coming to our climbing gym on a regular basis once we're open in early '23, and those folks, there's quite a few from the Element Apartments that are coming through, their address is all kind of within that Ashwabanon Holmgren Way corridor, there's a good density of that. And so we're going to have a lot of members, day-pass users, folks coming through that space, and with that proximity to Holmgren Way, we're just throwing our support behind the idea of studying it and continuing to understand it, because for us, we want this to be the, the best place to locate for our business, and then the community folks that are going to be accessing that space as well. So the more multimodal options from our perspective, the better. We also have ideas to plan bike rides from our space to get members engaged in different ways and activate that space. So we're excited to see what the study has to say.
Okay, thank you, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
Okay, I need a motion to close the floor, please.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the floor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
The one question I'd have is, I would say if we're going to go out and do a study, why are we stopping at Cormier? Holmgren is really a busy road all the way down to Hanson. I would like to see if we're, if we're going to go out and do a study, we still get to come back and make the decisions on what would be implemented, but if we're going to do a study, why don't we do a study of the entire stretch of it?
Joel will address that.
Yeah, I think the primary reason for ending at Cormier is because only Cormier to Lombardi is functionally classified, so as the MPO, that they would have the ability to do a study there gratis, but anything beyond that classification, or that functional classification segment, we would have to pay for that additional service from Brown County.
Totally understood.
Budget, 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 Jay.
Free, free is good, so, yeah, if we get the study done for free for that section of it, that'd be great, but to me, Holmgren is, is probably even from a traffic standpoint, is even busier from Cormier out to, out to 172, basically, than it is even on the other end. Now, not for an event, and not when events are going on, but from a day-to-day basis, I would almost argue that that part of, of Holmgren is used heavier than, than this part of Holmgren.
So where are you going to put the traffic from on event days, then? When they bottle it up from Cormier to the district down here?
I think, and we, we talked-
Where are you going to put the traffic, if you're going to put it down to those two-lane? Where are you going to put the traffic from Cormier down to the stadium district?
Yeah, that, and Gary, that, that was a conversation that was had at committee, so there was original conversation about doing what's called a road diet, right, and basically reducing the amount of direct through travel lanes on a road, that's the concept. By doing that, it opens up other modes of transportation opportunities, but then it also improves upon accessibility and turning movements on the road, so it's a concept. But one of the challenges with that is all based on that average daily traffic count. And Holmgren Way, and we, and this is the part that we talked about at the committee level, is that Holmgren Way is a unique, Ashwabanon is a unique area. We have high, high, high capacity issues on specific days of the year that require a certain capacity availability on that segment of roadway. Other points of the year, we don't. So it's just something to take into consideration that maybe a road diet in concept wouldn't work because of that capacity demand on those peak time periods. The other component that we talked about at the committee level that was brought up from Public Safety is that we have our public safety building located here, and access on, access onto Holmgren with ambulances and other emergency vehicles could be problematic. So when you're, when this study is being completed, the idea and the concept is you have to take into consideration not just the average day, but what happens on those peak demand days, like a packer game day, and then how does that impact access to the road for public safety vehicles and safety from that, that standpoint as well.
You know, what are we worried about public safety for? We just put stop and go lights out there when they hit the button to put the lights on stop, they know there's an emergency vehicle coming out. You know, I, you know, you know, 10 years ago, you had a chance to build a road between Holgrom, or, excuse me, Holgrom and O'Naita Street, and make it a walkway, and put shops and whatever there. There was your chance to do what you wanted to do. You didn't want to do that, though. So, you know, now we're taking a four-lane road and making it into something that's going to bottleneck the traffic when it gets to our event centers here.
Well, and we're not saying that, I mean, I think something that came up at our Bike Ped Committee, one of the members said, we need data, we need information to make good informed decisions, and that's what this is. I mean, right now, Gary, you're jumping to a conclusion that maybe will not be there, and that was one of the things that came up at the committee as well. To make a good informed decision, we need some professional information, we need to get as much as we can, and then look at it and see where we go. And that's, that's really what we're doing, to make us better at what we're doing and to get some information that'll help us make a good decision. I don't know about road diets, I mean, I know a little bit, but I certainly would not be the one to say, well, we can't do this, or we should do this, because I don't have the expertise to do that. I want someone to help us make that decision, and, and that's really what we're looking for, to get someone with the expertise and knowledge to help us make a good informed decision about this road that can be a great thing in our community, or it can become a problem area when we get way too many residents living there, and there's so many cars that it just becomes a problem. So just planning ahead and trying to encourage people to move in a different mode, to take some of the pressure off the road.
Jay, the only thing I liked so far was the word free.
And that's kind of what I'm looking at. Yeah, you know, and, okay, do the study, but after that, we have to make a decision.
It's going to be a court decision after that.
Yeah, you know, and I totally agree with you, Gary, I don't see how you would ever-
No.
How you'd ever bring this down to a two-lane road. I get the other mode of transportation, but there is so much traffic that goes up and down there, I don't know, I don't know how that'd ever be. I'd be shocked if, if Brown County would even come back with a recommendation that you could even do that, but, yeah, that, I don't see how that'd be feasible. To me, it'd almost go the other direction.
Once the study comes back and we get the data, you know, then it becomes a board decision with priority-based budgeting and what we want to do, so. We'll see what happens.
Okay, I'd make a recommendation to go ahead with the Holmgren Way corridor study and have Brown County provide that information for us.
Second.
Motion and a second to go ahead with the study, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
No.
Motion carried. Number 11, any items for next agenda? Well, we'll probably have the Blue Ridge lighting, and we'll have the appointment. Thank you, Ben. Okay, number 12, closed session items during-
Mary.
I'm sorry?
When are we having a meeting?
December 13th.
Oh, it is the 13th, okay, I missed that.
During the meeting, the village board of the village of Ashwabanon may convene into closed session pursuant to item number A. The village board may thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to Wisconsin statute section 19.85, parent two, to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda. I need a motion to go into closed session.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, although, roll call, please. President Kardasky?
Yes.
Trustee Service?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Krieger?
Yes.
And trustee Flukie?
Yes.
Okay.
This conference is no longer being recorded.